Good morning, welcome to Monday, December 2nd. Commissioners Court, we have a full court in present, carry you know certified meeting will probably posted. Please rise for prayer and pledge your allegiance.
Father with grateful heart, we're thankful for this day. Father, we just pray for the wisdom that these commissioners need and the judge needs to make the decision for the residents of Walker County. Father, may you guide God and direct our lives and may you gain the victory. Father, our Bible verse this morning is down in first Corinthians, chapter fifteen and verse fifty-seven. It reads, but thanks be to God which giveth us the victory through our Lord Jesus Christ. Father, we just want to thank you for sending your son Jesus, that he died for our sins and we have victory through him. Father, may we rejoice in that victory, may we live out that victory to the world. Father, just pray, Lord, that you go through this court with us in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
United States of America and the general public for the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every creature, and all.
We have one citizen's input, Ms. Rigsby.
Morning.
Morning.
Judge Commissioners. For the record. I stand before you. And I wanted to bring it to your attention properly once, hopefully for the last time locally. I stood before you. In representation. Of hundreds of our most vulnerable citizens. We have a crisis. I started bringing it before. Judge Pierce in March of twenty twenty. I met with you, Bill. Judge Pierce. And Quentin up there in the meeting room on May the fifth of twenty twenty-two. We have a bad crisis. When it comes down to the most vulnerable citizens. I do understand that our board members for CPS locally, as in every county are appointed by the commissioners. However. We have elected and appointed officials that are paid. To have oversight. The oversight in this county has been dropped. Went all the way back to twenty eighteen. I don't intend to stand by another year. And watch these victims be victimized all over again. It's clear for the records, the records will show. It's irrefutable of things that has taken place. It's been like I have been coming here.
Point order. This.
They need to pertain to number five, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. All your comments, right? So you have to.
Number five. Invoices and claims that are submitted, I say pay careful attention. Because claims have been paid, and what I say have been paid of services, of services that have been rendered and the services were not rendered. Undeniable, irrefutable. We did not receive the services. And those invoices were paid.
Are you addressing claims that are being paid today?
Oh, claims that I'm.
I'm not asking about claims.
Well, I'm saying this. Claims that are paid today, if you have one thing that's off. And any good accountant, even a poor accountant can tell you. If a claim has been paid and it continues on and on, it throws the whole thing off. But I'm not here to argue, I just wanted to address it and to bring it to the attention. Then on the other items that I have, the numbers, the purchases, that's up for discussion. Discuss them, make the purchases. But once again, it appears as though victims that have been victimized are still being victimized again. When we make a lot of purchases and we have citizens, and I'm saying the, the, the most vulnerable amongst us. That are not being addressed, though people are enriching themselves. So I say we should pay attention to it locally. And there are things that are for public record. And to address the court, Ken Paxton have the commissioners there in Austin. With this type of situation, public records. So we do need to look at it locally. And I have been addressing you all about the situation. And maybe some people are not aware that the CPS board comes directly under Commissioners Court. They are volunteers, but you all are paid officials. So someone does need to pay attention when claims are being paid. Or claims that have been paid, but the services were not rendered, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigsby.
Yeah, we got fourteen items in our consent agenda.
I think for me, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving second, it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Fifteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of two vehicles, chief.
Or in chief.
As all aware, we've had, had two vehicles that have been totaled in the last few months. Act has paid seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. I'm here before the court to ask that the insurance money, uh, to allow us to use the insurance money purchased. Two new vehicles. And I'm going to use the difference out of Senate Bill twenty-two money to pay for the. I'm just asking for the insurance money to be put on those two vehicles and that they can, uh, the court's approval to go ahead and order them with our budgeted vehicle. Uh, that were, were awarded to us in the budget twenty-four, twenty-five.
Sounds good, chief, you're not asking us for money, so.
And this is just to replace the two.
The two.
To replace two that were totaled, uh, through accidents. And, uh, so that there'll be a total of seven, counting my five that were ordered in budget in these two, uh, that will be ordered.
So you, uh, Cheryl's gonna add those two to the five that you got coming, basically.
That's coming on down here.
Okay.
Number twenty. Your motion.
That's my motion to approve.
Moving second, and all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Sixteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of updated item five scan fingerprint equipment.
Good morning, sir.
DPS did a audit on our fingerprint station recently. And once they looked at it, they told us that we had an unplugged, just immediately remove it from the system because it was so outdated. And what I'm here for today is to ask for fifty-nine hundred dollars to replace that.
Fifty-nine hundred dollars.
What? And then.
What is it?
Oh, it's a, it's the life scan machine. It affects every criminal justice agency in Walker County. But it, uh, we get fingerprints from it, uh, send it off, get Sid numbers, uh, state ID number, uh, TRN numbers. Anything criminal justice runs off of that. And it's, it's, we're doing it by old school, paper and ink right now, but. But it's a, it's not bad, but it's not the.
Efficient, most efficient. They're gonna be like a yearly against Fiona.
What, and, and we do have a yearly. The, when they pulled up the operating system, it was Windows seven. And, uh, which is way out there. I, I don't, I can't give you a reason why it's still Windows seven, but. The Hidemia people. Take care of that, we heard in the past, we're going to get an upgrade, we're going to get an upgrade. And it's just never come, and now it's, uh, with EPS, they just shut it down.
Okay.
Oh, you get all good, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's gone, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, uh, fifty-nine hundred gonna work for you. That's what you gotta have, up to fifty-nine hundred. Somewhere, question.
Uh, I mean, General Funk, that's been.
General Funk, that's it.
Second. Moving second, it all in favor, raise your hand.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Seventeen, discuss and take action on maintenance agreement renewal with Prestige Tower.
Uh, Dan is on.
Dan, anything change on this?
Bills. Bills.
And what's at the jail?
Jail.
Uh, the only thing that changed from the last agreement is the monthly price per site. Let me pull up the information.
Jesus, it went down?
It went up.
Went up, what do we pay a month?
One week less.
Oh, maybe it's three hundred total. Okay. The one up five, two thousand.
Everything in this country has gone up in the last few years, so. I make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second that. Moving second, it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Eighteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of eleven Motorola radios to include accessories and a five-year subscription for Motorola Solutions movie. Text one, HGAC contract RA-oh-five dash two-one of the sheriff's office.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
We are here to, you guys, to approve the purchase of the Motorola radios as requested by the sheriff's department. And it is through the department, I don't finish, we should just, right, not necessarily, of course, it's Motorola, so.
Okay, so. Funding on it, so.
Chief, this is, is he still here? This is with your Senate bill?
No, this is the homeland grant y'all approved.
Okay.
This is coming back. We actually have a bid number worked out for y'all to prove we use the grant money to purchase it.
Like Jake.
I'm gonna approve. So, are, are these, these handhelds or are they in car?
Oh, so these are handhelds.
Okay, thank you.
Motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Nineteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of twenty-twenty-five Ford F-150 four-by-four truck for planning and development. From Sam's Government Fleet Sales through TIPS contracts.
So we got, um, bids last time, uh, and, uh, Sam's is still has the. For the bid here, it's forty-six eight hundred, and that's for the planning and development, uh, truck. And that will be bought through a TIPS contract, it was in his budget. Uh, so now we're just asking to, to buy it.
So I guess, I guess they're beating them, they beat Callwell out this time.
All right.
I'm gonna make the motion to approve it into item nineteen as presented.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action on purchase of six twenty-twenty-five police Tahoe's for Sheriff's Department from Sam's Government Fleet Sales through TIPS contract. Two-four-zero-nine-oh-one, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven-seventy-twenty-five each.
And as discussed with the sheriff, this is the five vehicles that he was allotted in his, uh, twenty-four-twenty-five budget. And so we are requesting to spend that.
So we talked about five a while ago.
Yeah, this is six.
Six, two.
Should be seven. I did go to Huntsville High School.
I, I know, but we had discussed just five. Uh, originally it was six, and then we reduced, we, meaning the sheriffs and I discussed it to five, but if you're willing to give us eight, we'll take it, no, I'm joking.
Be seven, the five that I was awarded in budget were twenty-five, dude, right here, so it should be.
Total of seven.
Seven.
Total of seven.
And they're gonna make up the difference with their money, all of us.
With the insurance.
Right.
Make a motion to approve.
Did you get all that, Gary? Amendment to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss. Discuss and take action for approval of contract with. Quest. Whatever, carry soft under DIR contract, DIR TSO forty-two eighty-eight. Yeah, for forty-two five oh-six.
Been working, uh, with Cheryl and, uh, this purchase is requested under the DIR contract. Uh, this is software, uh, that will coordinate or pull information from our financial softwares, different modules. It's been part of the plan, uh, for a long time, we're just now getting to the point where we're ready to add it. Uh, of course, originally when we went to the cloud version, uh, Microsoft AX, we had hoped to go to the government cloud, it was not available. We had to wait to the government cloud, we just recently, uh, finished that transfer out. And so we're now wanting to basically, uh, project modules, uh, budget modules and transparency and, um. EMS, uh, of the budget book, where it's a digital budget book and hopeful, hopefully we're going to move from the big, big paper budget book to a digital format.
How you feel about that? I'll just be honest with you, I don't think I like that.
A little paper, a shortened version of a paper.
That'll work.
Yeah, they, they don't like, they don't like you writing on them, you know?
Well, yeah, it is what it is, I gotta have my.
But you can't print it out.
Okay, as long as it can be printed out, we're good.
And this is a three-year government contract, which, uh, most softwares through the, uh, with the government funding out clause. Year one would be, uh, approximately forty thousand dollars plus, uh, some consulting fees to help with the implementation. And then in year two, that amount drops by about eighty-five hundred dollars because, uh, there won't be implementation fees during those years.
And this was built in, in that IT stuff?
Yeah, it's part, it's budgeted in the ongoing budget.
I make a motion to approve.
Several year, and generally what we've been doing at the end of the year, that money's not spent, it's been moved over to the projects fund.
I still make a.
I got a motion.
Sure.
Moving second, it all in favor?
I do.
All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and approve hiring a temporary employee in the county auditor's office to be paid from available funds and operating budget. And project funds as an option to contracting for services opening at significantly less hour rate.
Yeah, um, as part of the county auditor budget over the ortho exemption is given to our, uh, temporary employees. But our policies also require that a Commissioners Court approves, uh, temporary employees being hired. And, uh. In the order, it said to be paid from available salary funds, this request is to allow me to supplement, uh, those dollars with monies that are budgeted in, uh. In my other operating categories, the contract categories.
Sounds good, Ms. Patricia, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Moving second, it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Patricia.
Twenty-three, discuss and take action to review and consider proposals for revit agreements with the city of Huntsville for the jail, municipal court, EMS, and fire services. Has anybody looked at any of those in the last twenty years?
No, it's been a long time, not since I've been here, so I think we probably ought to.
So I just wanted.
Decide to look at it.
Yeah, to pull them and. I'll send them all out to y'all and y'all read them, review them, see what y'all want to come up with, back and. Okay. Talk and look.
That'll work.
Yeah. Take no action on twenty-three. Twenty-four, received presentation from ESD one on the status of their new facilities. Ms. Lisa.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hope you had a great Thanksgiving. I'm pleased to be here, I'm not here to ask for anything, but just to give you an update on the progress that's made on our interlocal agreement. Um, we've already placed an EMS crew in, um, Riverside, and we've made some progress, so I wanted to, you're about to see some activity on the property that we purchased. And I'd rather you know about it before you start seeing it and wonder, so I'm here to give you a little heads up about what's going.
Right.
All right, so, um, I gave you, I've got just kind of an outline I'm gonna go through and we'll look at some maps. Okay, as of, um, our last update, we informed you, we had purchased that property at the tax sale in March. A, a property in Riverside, the address is three-five-nine-one Highway nineteen, and it is about two point two acres of property. So it's just south of Daisy's and just north of where the highway becomes provided with the grass median is where it is. So it's less than a mile from the critical intersection there in Riverside where the light is. And that was our, our goal was to purchase property right, um, in that vicinity. Since, since purchase, purchasing the property at auction, we've secured clear title, we've secured a survey, we've cleared the land, you may have noticed it's marked with some markers out there if you've driven up nineteen. We've established accounts with Riverside Special Utility District for Water, with the City of Riverside for Sewer, and with Entergy for Electrics. And we were really, um, pleased to discover that there was already water and sewer access on the property, which we were not confident of when we bought it. And at first we're told we might have to go under the road, et cetera, like the thing very costly, but nope, it's all good to go, so that has saved us time. We've also met with Walker County EMS, uh, to establish minimum expectations for the housing of the EMS crew and the two ambulances per the interlocal agreement. We've agreed upon and engaged an architectural firm to represent us for phase one of our property development. The firm we've chosen is Martinez Architects, and we've chosen them, um, for a number of reasons, but the most, um, significant, I guess, is that they specialize and only exclusively do, um, fire and EMS and first responder facilities. That is their business, and that's what they do, they've designed over two hundred, um, fire stations and EMS facilities in Texas. And they go from the very elaborate, you know, and large, um, big city departments to the very small rural and just rudimentary pragmatic departments. And so we think they probably have some plans on their shelves that will meet our needs in the future, that we don't have to start out with, uh, um, an architect to educate them about what our needs are. But they may be able to reverse that a little bit and tell us, um, what some of our needs are based on their many years of experience. Um, so phase one plan, um, I've submitted, I've resubmitted a couple of maps, so, look at the maps right there, more copies of anybody in the, in the gallery. Uh, the copy, but the two maps on the top show, um, I've just put a, I put a, you know, bold Sharpie around, that's the location of our property. And I wanted to give you these maps to show the context of, if you go north along Highway nineteen, the first intersection you come to there is four oh-five, which is our direct access to Dodge. Which is part of our, um, ESD, and then if you continue up nineteen, you'll see where the light at Riverside connects with nine eighty. So to see the approximate location of the property, the second map is just the, um, two-door version of that. If you like to see the other facilities and topography that gives you the context of where we are. The third and fourth pages are just a zoomed in version of that, if you'd like to get a little bit. More close-up of our property, this version of it is completely tree, if stay where it is. There, we. Um, see a good view of the top order. So, um, I, you've seen these maps before, I just provided them before. Um. So now I've also provided two sheets, which are the ledger's ones, like sheets that I have folded. And the top one, the first is a sketch of the property showing our plan for a phase one development. And you'll see it has an asphalt entrance at the existing driveway on the property. Um, a decomposed granite road entering and heading south along the east and along nineteen, ending in a widened, decomposed granite area, providing parking around the structures. The long red, um, structure farther south is a single wide trailer house unit, um, and that is to house the duty crews. Um, then there's a two, two-car covered carport is what that slash shaded area is between the two structures. They could have a covered carport, um, for the two, um, terminals that would be living there at any time, and also a covered walkway for them to get over to the garage. Where the two, um, ambulance units will be housed. So it's pretty simple, but as you can see in this drawing, we're just trying to, um, provide, uh, an area where we couldn't meet the immediate needs of our interlocal agreement. But at least most of the property available for us to continue to dream and imagine and, um, propose what we might do in the future. And it's protected the best, um, part of the site for development, um, for those future structures that might be a part of the ESD's, um, plans in the future. So, um, so yeah, it's a very simple plan, so there are some notes regarding these items that you're looking at. We've asked that the ambulance garage be designed with future use in mind, um, when it's no longer necessary to be an ambulance bay, if we put that in the future building. Um, we wanted to design it a little bit longer, um, because we thought in the future we might have a tanker or some other longer, heavier, taller, whatever, um, vehicle there. So we're, we've designed that building to accommodate more than just the two ambulances in the future. Um, we've chosen a single wide trailer unit with the expectation that resale on this building would be more favorable than if we got like an oilfield unit, we did price those and looked at those as well, we also looked at renting units. But we felt like this is the most cost-effective and, um, the best for resale. Um, it has three bedrooms and two baths, so two living spaces plus a bedroom or an office common living areas. We positioned these structures where their future use will be optimized and they will not disrupt the construction, um, of a future building site, won't just. That building won't disrupt their operations and their operations won't, um, disrupt any building in the future. So in, in our current activity is we've approved Martinez Architects at our last meeting in November, um, to prepare a bid solicitation for the installation of the single wide trailer unit. And also to prepare a bid solicitation for the garage, um, for the two ambulance space. So these, um, are in motion and it's been well hopefully deflected in December and awarded, and then in December. Preparing the bid solicitation for engineering and construction that were required, and so we hope to award those contracts soon after the first of the year. And to begin that actual plan in January, really, it's operating in January, but. With the holidays, it was likely, say, you're too aggressive, so, um, now I'm saying, I'm hoping that will be operational in February, that will. Not in August. So, I just have a few notes of, uh, beyond this about our fire duty crew, but is there any questions that you guys have or comments about? Oh, the second page is just a picture of a sample of the, um, single wide housing unit that, um, we'll be soliciting bids on. And it also shows elevations of the, uh, the trailer and the garage. We decided to do, um, you know, roll outdoors and do a, a proper four-sided, um, building, it's, exceeds the expectations of Walker County EMS. But we don't want to have to go back and spend money on the building later for future use, so we decided to make proper building and it'll have decades and decades of, of good use for, um, the fire department in the future.
I like the changes y'all made since last Tuesday.
Yeah.
That was pretty fast.
Pretty quick given Thanksgiving and then, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, at our meeting, we had a draft of this plan on Tuesday at our meeting, and we took input from the fire chief and, um, some of the other tactical personnel that were present and made some adjustments, um, for people who actually have. Um, worked with EMS and know their needs and know the future needs of fire department, so we sent a sketch quickly to the architect, so I could give you, um, an updated version today, so yeah, this is draft two. Um, Martinez Architects is a comprehensive firm, they do design, engineering, and project management, and so that's what we anticipate their role will be, we're just, we're still let them lead us in this process. So that, the last bits I have there are just regarding our fire duty crew, um, this is just for you to be aware of, that's. So the, the last bits I have there are just regarding our fire duty crew. Um, this is just for you to be aware of that simultaneously. Um, we're working on that. We had previously reported uh, that the merger of Thomas Lake Road and Riverside Volunteer Fire Department was in process. It has been completed, including the formal dissolution of Thomas Lake Road Volunteer Fire Department as a nonprofit entity. We closed their bank accounts. There and they are now officially part of Riverside Volunteer Fire Department. And something else we've been working on for a few years is that now all assets of Thomas Lake Road and um, Riverside, all assets, vehicles, equipment and real estate. Have been transferred to ownership of the E S D. And um, so there's no more back and forth about is that your truck or our truck or who's going to spend money on that? It all belongs to the E S D. Um, and so we will take care of the equipment and the facilities. Riverside has hired a department chief, their first paid personnel, and that's uh, Ben Crocker, Chief Ben Crocker's been a part of the department for years. Riverside is working with legal counsel to rewrite their bylaws, um, to incorporate the operation of a paid fire duty crew. And that's almost completed. We're just dotting the i's and crossing the t's now. E S D one is also working with legal counsel to redraft our agreement with Riverside uh, to. Um, account for the leaseback of facilities, because now we lease the facilities back to them to manage on our behalf. And to provide the funding for the duty crew. So until um, that document is complete, um, their attorney told them they can't hire anybody until they have a document agreement with us saying that it would be. We've also remodeled the Riverside offices and community room to provide accommodations for the fire duty crew. It's ready to go. They can be applied immediately. And Riverside should be in a position to post positions in December and have our fire duty crew in operation for January. And just as a reminder, that duty crew is intended to be five or seven. Twelve hours a day. That's what we can afford at this point. Um, we would love to do twenty-four seven. We cannot afford it at this point. But um, we hope to be able to see how that, that does and then. Then we can add it to twenty-four hour. In the future, but so when this EMS duty crew responds to a call, our fire duty crew will be right there. Um, they're required to be.
So Cheryl going to paid duty crews. Do you still have a number of volunteers?
We do.
All two.
In fact, um, we, as a part of the plan, Riverside proposed a plan to E S D or funding. And that includes uh, not only the paid duty crew, but also they're going to begin to compensate volunteers for training and for show network calls. Um, there's, you know, some parameters around what you can do without, out that making them an employee. But they're providing some incentives for people and that has, I'm told, already increased participation and interest in um, new volunteer activity. So we're hoping that the paid duty crew, rather than sweltering volunteers, will actually encourage um, volunteers who maybe can't do the paid duty crew or. Maybe I'll encourage them to get the qualifications they need to serve on the duty crew, um, whereas they have incentive to do that previously. Um, or also just to be more involved in the department that's more vibrant, making good calls and um. So some, some real activity going on.
It's been a long journey, but y'all may love.
How it's moving right now. So I appreciate your support. Be happy to answer any questions or people who want to come see the land. There's not much to see though, it's just a flat piece of bare land, but um, let me drive by it and see it.
Yeah, it's been a long time since I've been to one of the board members, um, board meetings, but I can say way back there, I wouldn't want to have been sitting in y'all's chairs. Just put it that way.
It is nice seeing Dirk turned over and at least a picture of the building. That's, that's.
So if you have any questions, you're always free to contact me. Be surprised by something going on out there. So um, I'd like to get here first and let you know. Appreciate all your help and your.
All right, thank you.
Twenty-five, discuss email received regarding E S D one. You got any discussion on that? Twenty-six, discuss and take action on the reappointment of Michael Billberry and Floyd Gardner to board emergency service district number three.
So I'm. Uh, but I'm still waiting on one to go back with.
Would you like to approve Mr. Billberry?
Uh. Actually, uh, Mr. Garner's the one I've got.
Oh, we, we have Mr. Billberries.
Oh.
Ally, right? You have Foods?
Uh, I do.
All right, let's.
Okay, well, that makes sense why he ain't never get back to. Alright, so we, yeah. So I'll make a, I'll make a motion when we reappoint Mike Billberry or Garner to the board of E S D three.
Second.
Moving second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Sorry about that.
That's all in the alley. I'll get you the email.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on the reappointment of Lisa Olson and Kelsey Hammack to the board of emergency service district one.
I'll make that motion to reappoint Lisa Olson and Kelsey Hammack.
I'm assuming you've got all the paperwork.
Second.
Moving second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carry. Thanks for getting all that paperwork together. Twenty-eight, discuss supporting legislation for Walker County have C M V officers.
Uh, I put this one in Florida. Brazoria County uh, is a port county and they are going. Towards uh, they're getting their representative to take legislation. To uh, allow them to have a commercial motor vehicle. Uh, because they don't qualify like Walker County doesn't qualify. Um, we have problems in the south, southern end of Walker County with traffic. Uh, it's usually during the peak times of the day when the weight station is open, so. We uh, we've worked trying to alleviate some of that stuff. We've gotten one text out, we've put a curfew in place, which was for the great big loads and that, that has helped. Mainly the curfew, the, the curfew was revolves around the school and school times let out and drop off all that. Uh, start and stop stuff, so um. Listening to Brazoria County, they, they think that if, uh, we think that if we go together, trying to get something like this done to uh. It would be a good time to have two representatives going uh, uh, forward with, with legislation. So again, this is basically to combat the traffic in the, in the south end of the county. Um, it would just be uh. Carve out language to, to include that to where we can have a commercial vehicle enforcement officer within the county. And that's what I'm asking for today is just to help our residents out in the south end of the county.
Yeah, you basically. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, this would be supported through our. Departments, not through DPS.
It would be to support it either through the sheriff or the constable's office. Um. I, I asked Gene to be here to talk to maybe a bit, uh, he's back there. Uh, Gene, I talked about just, you know, this is a, this is a pipe dream is what it is. Do I think it'll ever get through legislation? I don't know. It, it's pretty tough for the, the eighteen whey, there's the trucking industry's got. Pretty strong uh, ties in Austin and. I don't know where it's going to go. Um. We're just trying, I'm trying to address the problem with, that we have on the main thoroughfare through. The, the southern end, which is highway seventy-five and um. And that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem kind of moving with the legislative part of it, but I would ask that y'all definitely work with DPS.
That's yeah.
You know, so.
Well, and at some point, I mean, we're talking about adding a new officer. Our deals, so I mean, uh, that would have to be a budget. Process. There, you know. That I know that the state's not going to find.
Yeah. No. Might say we are either.
Yeah, yeah, but we already know the state ain't going to do it.
No, state's not going to give us anything. We know that upfront.
Gene, you got something to add?
Yeah, DPS, we, I've talked about these things numerous times now. DPS is in full support. We're not going to take anything away from DPS. We're actually going to help those guys. If that, I say we, I'm talking about Walker County. Uh, if the court, if that legislation were to pass, we were able to legally have C M V officer, officer or officer. Uh. They're all in. It's just like when we started doing that work in an accident, they, they, the more help they get, they're happy for. Uh, but. And it's not just highway seventy-five, it's not, it's highway one fifty. Uh. Yeah, but it, when that weight station's open, you can just automatically see the traffic blow up on both of those roads. Uh, and if there's a, any kind of accident involving on, involved on seventy-five. Then those county roads start getting hit. They'll come in on one fifty, take Hawthorne Road, cut over to twenty-six, uh, twenty-six ninety-three, jump over Hawthorne, come out thirteen seventy-five. You'd be surprised. And uh, those are obviously, you know. County maintained roads with eighteen whey and all that shouldn't be running those roads and it's strictly because the weigh station's open and it's not always uh. It's not always guys that are just trying to avoid a weigh station or a legal truck. It can be both. Uh, guys who are driving, you know, been driving too long, whatever it might be. But DPS, I can tell you, the local people, I didn't talk to the. Main man of DPS, but the local sergeant is in favor of any help that they can get with truck enforcement. Uh, last time I talked to him, they. You know. Spelled out all the equipments you needed, the requirements to do it and so. We definitely have, the county would have their support. And do something like this.
Yeah, that's all I would ask, Gene. Y'all just work with, with those guys down there. Anyway.
There's no harm in the discussion.
No.
I got, we're coming back.
Yeah. Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, my direction. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Gene.
All right, twenty-nine, discuss agreements previous and current between the county and Hartz concerning storm shelter. We're going to go into executive session here, five, five, one point oh seven one and five, five, one point oh seven two. Uh, that. Yep.
How was what? Sorry.
Possible litigation. After a meeting the other day.
Okay.
Uh, times nine thirty-nine.
...
All right, we're back at ten thirty-four from executive session, no action, action on twenty-nine. We're going to thirty. Public hearing concerning plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-one-eight replata lots twelve and thirteen, block one, section eleven of Wildwood Shores, time's ten thirty-four. Anyone here to speak on that?
Wait.
Thank you, Wade.
I'm trying not to get my feelings hurt.
Yeah.
It's just they're so confident that.
That's right. Time is ten thirty-five, we'll close public hearing. Thirty-one, discuss and take action on plat number twenty-two-four dash one, that dash zero-one-eight replata lots twelve thirteen, block one, section eleven, Wildwood Shores.
Maybe. One of the normal ones we do, right? Or move for approval.
Second thing.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. Pass. Thirty-two, public hearing concerning plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-zero replata lots twenty-three and twenty-four, block two, section four, time is ten thirty-five. Anyone here to speak upon that?
Same thing, Andy. Uh, yes, uh, um. Eight-three and twenty-four.
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah. Yeah, this one's twenty-three and twenty-four.
Number thirty-two?
Yeah. And thirty-six.
So it's a combination.
Yeah. Time is ten thirty-six, public hearing is closed, number thirty-three, discuss and take action on plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-zero replata lots twenty-three, twenty-four, block two, section four.
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-four, public hearing concerning plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-five replata lot seven and eight, block one, section four, Wildwood Shores, time is ten thirty-six, anyone here to speak upon that?
Let me see, Thomas. Problemation, two lots, anyone else?
These days are getting, they're so closed enough that they'll be big enough for buddy.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, no, we do them.
Time has been thirty-seven, public hearing is closed, number thirty-four, public hearing concern.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-five replata lot seven and eight, block one, section four, Wildwood Shores.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-one-three Chandler Creek subdivision BW Robinson.
What you got here, Andy?
Well, it's a. Four lots with the right of ways, this is the one that's.
That I talked about. Okay.
Any objections to it?
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on Preston and Ann Dumick, request for variance to section eight, two-point-two-point-three of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding family grant requirements. Is it good, Brandon?
This one's fine. So we have a family grant, there was originally a family twenty years ago, plus years ago, uh, there was a foreclosure of property, grant. What's that?
Red online?
I think they're trying to go for the next one.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um. It ended up in the hands of somebody outside the family. Then, uh.
And we meet them?
Yeah.
Because it was a foreclosure, Andy, I get.
Yeah, and so, uh, they're here, if anybody has any questions for them, their application is essentially for us to allow the exception to continue, the land's been moved outside the family. But it's been extended period of time and there's some extenuating circumstances, I think that they are presented.
So it's going back in the family?
No, it's thing outside.
Outside the family.
So is it, is it the depth and width, is that the only issue it's got with it?
Well, I mean, it was originally, it was originally exemption under, under family grants.
Right.
So it did, it did actually, I mean, back in these days, family grants were required to actually make it out to a public road, this one actually wasn't.
Right.
Um, um, as under the, if it was required to be platted, then obviously we would have a, some issues with depth and width and those kinds of things, but if, um, the court wants to extend the exception, even though it's been sold outside the family, that's what they're asking from the court.
So they have access to?
Yes. Do that one, uh, the front here on the state road.
Okay.
You want to talk about it?
Not with you granted, no.
Not really, you good with it, Andy? You want to come, you want to come up and introduce yourself and tell them. Kind of tell them the background of it.
Yeah.
My name's Anna Dunkie, um, we bought in twenty-twenty-two, kind of BA loan, we bought it because we're. Um, apparently it was a parent track, a three acre, and they split it, and they made that exception on there, but we was hoping to get around that because we had no clue.
So let's go and clean them up, get them where they need to be.
Thank you so much.
I'll second that. Moving second to all in favor.
Ending on that track real quick, ending on that track right there, she said it was a parent and they looked like they cut up in three, so there were two other tracks that got family exemptions also.
Original track. The original one was this track?
Yeah.
This was cut out under a family grant. This is the track that they know.
It's all one track.
No, it's not, it's not one track.
There's three different tracks, and it was originally under a family grant, now it's been sold out.
Yeah, so when we, when we do a, oh, I'm looking at it right there, sorry about that, we do a family grant exemption, we, we put something on the plaid or the survey or something that flags it, right? That's an affidavit. An affidavit.
And that's what came up, when they came in for the permit, they pulled the affidavit, the affidavit had a condition for family grants on it, so we couldn't issue the permit, that's why they came, that's why they're coming to the commissioner's board for this.
Right, but that's like step three, so step two is when this company bought it, and they, they held the deed to, it's anywhere on their deed, does it say this is a family grant piece of property, and if you sell it, you can't develop it?
We don't do deed restrictions, so it might have come up with their title search, but we didn't do the restrictions.
The only, the only scary part about this whole deal is we don't. It, we've set a precedence that.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna do, but it's not all for helping them out, because they're end owners, end users, whatever, but, uh. It's gonna be tough to set a precedent that if the family divides it all out, then just bring the court. That's, that's the scariest part about this thing.
So there's no way.
I think you got, you got a little something to fall back on because it was actually sold to a repo.
Right.
You know?
For closure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is.
But there should be, I mean, there should be something, should be something, I mean, did they, did they, so the family, we didn't make them replat it when they did it, the picture you got there.
Exception's not a plat.
Okay. But I mean, I just, I mean, it put her and her purchase in jeopardy, we had said no, which, you know.
They would then have to.
Yeah.
File a plat.
Yeah. And come ask for variances and stuff like that, because this is a eight-to-one tract, depth to width, which is way outside our number, so, I don't know, I, I think, I don't know how we can do it, but it almost seems like we need to have a way, if we put a family, we put a, a family deed on a piece of property, family exemption, we, whoever buys that should know, when they pick that piece, when they pick that, I mean, that repo company should know when he looked at it like, hey, this is a family tract.
We had a VA loan too, like the title search and everything.
We did put the affidavit record that does state on the affidavit that, you know.
But where's that affidavit at?
It goes in the, it goes in the deed record.
It's in the deed record, so, okay, that's all he knows, as long as somebody does it, does a search and finds it. Prior to, you know, they have the, they have the ability to find it prior to purchasing, is my, is my point.
It's not attached to the deed itself, though, uh, unless the seller does that.
But when they do a title search, it pops up, so it's not on the actual deed, because the deed's in the plaque cabinet.
Okay.
So that pays more.
Okay.
I, I still need to see a pair of hands on yes or no, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are good.
Oh, that, no, my God.
Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on Tetra Businesses LLC requests to variance to section three-point-three-six of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding groundwater certification requirements for plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-two.
They are online?
They're online. Andy, what I'm not seeing, all I see is well reports from drillers, and normally we have something from our water guys, we got one water guy with us today, or Zach or somebody to tell us there's enough water out there in that neighborhood, that these wells will be okay. I don't see that, Andy.
Um, let me know. But it's not. So all I, all I, all that was submitted to us is support of the variance is what you have, which is, you know, our water locations and the associated reports. We don't have, no objection, I mean, blue, red, blue bonnet.
Yeah, I don't know where it.
Sort of a study that, that has been done in the past, uh, um, submitted to, up to blue bonnet, that has not been accomplished on this particular application.
So can we, did we tell them we needed it, and they said we'll take our chances, or what?
Well, I mean, the, the application for a variance to have to do the study altogether and present, um, credible evidence to the, to the court. Um, it's not really a.
I hear you.
Sort of standing parameter for what the court will consider as.
Right.
I'd be good, is it ten acres, correct?
Ten acres, yeah.
We're trying to bust it into.
Four.
That's right. I missed the.
Move the last page.
Well, we've required everybody else that I can remember to do something with either blue bonnet or somebody else telling us that the groundwater is there and sufficient to support it.
Yeah.
See it? James is outside your area, y'all don't serve this area.
I mean, what could, yeah.
I've seen. But did y'all go that far out, James?
We don't, we don't have pipe on, on the ground at this point, but it is in our certification area too, sir.
So they never come to talk to y'all's office either?
We got the agenda from Ali on Friday's first of August. That's why we're here, gathering information.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, well, you know, maybe our side needs to look at notifying y'all some kind of way when we have agenda items, I don't know, we need to sit down with you one day.
Okay, so how far is this? Can you get water to it? I don't even know where it's at.
I don't either, where's it at on Pool Road, if y'all out there listening to us, where y'all located?
About to. Soon.
We got a name?
Uh. It was Rihanna Hart.
Rihanna?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
Can you kind of tell us where this property is off of Pool Road?
Yes, uh, it's on, um.
Right, right past.
Seventy-ninety-one.
Yep, we got, we got it, we're right by Love. I don't know, there's a way out of Love.
Yeah, they right past Mills Lane.
Yeah.
Right by Love's.
Is she the property owner?
Renee, are you the property owner?
Yes, sir.
And what was your last name?
Hart.
Hart, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I mean, if I hadn't talked to Zach or anybody.
Yeah, I mean.
Pass on more information?
Yeah, I think we're, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we pass on this and let them bring it back with, with something from Zach or someone telling us there's water there. Before we move on it.
Do you do that or deny with?
Or deny it, what, what do we need to do, Andy?
Deny with the ability to bring it back, under the same.
All right, that's my motion to deny with the ability to bring it back.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand.
Can I say something?
Motion carries. Thirty-nine, discuss and take action on plat number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-two, third manner subdivision JA McGary survey.
Same thing on this, Andy.
Yeah. Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, without knowing on this, you can't know on that, so.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yes.
Decline that and let them bring it back.
We'll deny and with the ability to bring it back.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty, discuss and take action on Four Star USA Real Estate Group Incorporated, request for variance to section four-point-nine of. Forty, discuss and take action on Four Star USA Real Estate Group Incorporated, request for variance to section four point nine of Walker County subdivision regulations regarding including the entire parent track, when plating for plat number twenty twenty-two dash zero three seven Peach Creek Forest subdivision.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning, again.
O V Land Solutions, yeah, been a while, month since I've been here, hopefully these variances are a little simpler today. First one has to do with, uh, so planning the Peach Creek Forest development, we're, I mean, just requesting that instead of having to pound, plating the entire parent tract, section one or two, three, four, five, or six, we just plat section by section. Um, you, in the description, you know, Andy and I were actually just talking outside, we thought what's gonna happen is, let's say, future section, we get to plat five, right? If we had all of this in one tract and we're having to replat each time, by the time we get down here, we have residents in the district, you know, I was under the impression we were gonna have to get signatures by every person, and everyone has to pay tax certificates, which would be a nightmare. Um, sounds like that may not be the case, but regardless, I think the exposure that it brings, when we get to here, you've got these residents that are, I want trees in my backyard still, I don't want you to go clear all this, so they could come to court and still petition, um, the plat, so I would still like to be able to piece this out, section one, two, three, four, five, and six, and individual plaits, we'll just call this the remainder of the two hundred fifty.
So the application that we have out in now is for section one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what I would, the difference that he's talking about is, section one, which is this bold line section right here, this would be shown as a reserve on, in the, in the bounds of the plat, if this variance wasn't granted. If the court grants the variance, what it does is allows this, them to show this as a remainder, raw acreage remainder, not included in the bounds of the plat per section one, then come back and pull another section out of this raw acreage remainder, right, not, not, not make it a reserve of section one, pull another section out of the remainder at a future date, they're looking, I think, for approval to do that on all five sections.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, six sections, if the court wants to grant it, uh, for section one and look at section two when they get there, or section three when they get there, that would be another alternative that, that I could, I could give you is, the, the one that they're trying to get right now is one, and their goal is to come back with a section two, three, four, five, and six. Um, and their idea is they want to keep those raw acreage, if it goes into the original plat, then the boundary of the original plat, then when they go to do section two, it will technically be a replat of section one.
And the naming gets real hairy too, when you get down here and it's section replata of replata of.
Okay, so if you replat, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, I don't think, but, I mean, that answers me this question, if we plat section one, and then two years from now, you're in section six, and you're ready to plat section six, and we changed our development code, our subdivision regulations, does he fall under the, the new ones as we go? You know what I mean, if we say roads had to be eighty feet wide now in section six, he has to do that, or is he held back to the standards from plat, from section one? You know what I'm saying?
What I understand, he's held the, um, original one that you're putting in.
Again, this is a feature of.
Right.
This one falls under the other.
The whole ones.
The old regulations.
This particular development, there are some variances that have been issued property-wide, and there's some variances that have been issued on particular sections. So, the court, they, they could get where they need to go with section one, the court granted the variance on section one, for the, for the remainder on section one to be shown as a remainder. That would, if you didn't grant it on all, potential future sections, which is, right, because it, some of it depends on which one they bring in which order. Um, then they could come back when they get rid of their section two and say, hey, we want the same variance that we got on section one for section two, and you can have the, have this here and again.
What's you prefer? You want to get it with it?
Think the second, like, gives the court safety?
Okay.
In seeing what's gonna happen and which section's gonna come next, but it's.
So it's decision. But I was, I'm bringing this up, this is what we've done on a lot of the other subdivisions, correct?
A wild section by section develops, yeah, and the old rules, it, 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 it didn't require it. There's a requirement that was put in on the new rules specifically so that the court would have more management ability on these subdivisions as they went in. I, I, I'll give you an example, a big concern would be like if they, they did this section, then they came in next with this to show this as a remainder, you, the court want to make sure that transportation was taken care of, drainage was taken care of, for that section as they, as they get.
So that was my next comment to you, was that when you're designing section one, it has to, you have to be thinking about two, three, ten, whatever, however you make, so you can't, not gonna come in here and say, we built what, one to code, but it didn't make code now that we put another two hundred homes on.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm not trying to.
They're already doing that with the drainage, that's one of the previous variances they got to absolute master plan of drainage.
Yep, and so, I mean, you know, if you approved of it, the variance today where we don't have to come back each time, we can do it either way, it's just, I don't have to drive up here every time if we don't, but, I mean, it doesn't mean that if I came and did this one next, you still can't just object to plat, I mean, because that would be dumb to build that next, we have no infrastructure, so I think, yeah, I, I don't think it opens the court to any liability by providing this all at once, rather than having to do six individual, um, requests, but we can, if need be, I mean, regardless, you know, we're still approving if it makes sense section by section.
Yeah.
We do have Zoom, so you don't have to drive every time, so don't worry about it.
That'd work, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I'm supposed to be approved of variance to section one, with the next sections being brought back to court.
Moved and seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Forty-one, discuss and take action on Four Star Real Estate Group Incorporated, request for variance to section A two point two point one, A two point six, and B two point three of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding size of lot for exemption to plat requirements.
So I'll start this, so, so there is a section of the property that's part of the original parent tract for this that we're looking at.
That's right here on the, already side of the.
It's the eastern edge of the property, they're trying to do a developer's lot, I'll let, exactly, um, and they applied for an exception under the ten acre rule, but didn't make the ten acres.
Nine point nine eight.
So, so they're here before the commissioner's court, like I tell people all the time, all lines are ridiculous, right?
Yeah.
But you have to have a line, right? My kids always, my kids always hate to gripe about, you know, the, this tall to ride the ride, and if I'd had my boots on, Dad, I could, that, that is true.
We needed some.
Oh, but, so they're before commissioner's court for this, I think their ultimate plan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be when they get to plating this section, they would bring this in with the plat, and it would ultimately be platted. Right now, they're asking for an exemption to divide this lot out from the parent tract under an exception, the ten acre exception, they're asking for the court to allow the grace of the nine point, uh, whatever acre.
So I have two questions, this is gonna be the developer's.
So this is a, we have Walker County mud number one, and so to activate the mud, we've got to have the board directors who own land in the development, which is what this is, so this land is never serviced, no water, sewer, access, power, anything, it is just land to show that they own land in the district, usually we put these in the detention pond, but I didn't have a ten acre detention pond, um, so, we would use this to just give them acts, or, uh, land ownership in the development, and then in the future, when we have resident board members that make up the entire board, this land gets dissolved, and it goes to the HOA or the mud, and it's just flat land, no vertical improvements, nothing done with it, just.
Is this place in the flood plain? This isn't, this not by the creek over there?
It is, but it's, it's outside.
On the map.
Right.
So it'd be undeveloped?
Undevelopable.
I've heard that.
Ultimately be brought in.
Yeah.
And the plan is it ultimately be brought in with a future, but it'll be, it'll be in a future.
Yeah, I've heard it a lot.
I put it in there just in case, question came up, uh, we, you can use it as pond space, but we've been trying to model it, and it's too inefficient, it's, we're too old, it's not. It's long and it's steep, so you can't cut anything down, and you end up putting it into your neighbor's property.
We're talking about point zero one two thousandths of an acre.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, I'm forty.
I'll second that. Moving second of all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
All right.
No more executive session, public comment. Questions from media, commissioner's court. I want to thank Larry and his crew for getting all the Christmas lights up, for working hard on the float for Saturday, so come get.